We'll get started. All right. Welcome, everybody, tonight. We have a lot of things on the agenda. I'd like to do a roll call, please.
Alderman Ship, absent. Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderman Tulliner.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Then we're gonna do the pledge allegiance and then we'll keep standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. You ready? Item number five.
Minutes of the May 21st, 2018 meeting.
Move to the venus printed.
Second.
Move to the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries. We then have update Rock Island. Couple items here. So it's tell on your neighbor awards. Each year, residents of Rock Island are encouraged to tell on your neighbor by nominating the yards in their neighborhood that are, that they find to be most appealing or most improved. The City of Rock Island's Beautification Commission will review all entries and awards, awards will be presented at the August 27th, 2018 city council meeting. Nominations can be made through August 9th, 2018. Digital photos of the nominated yards are required. Please do not go on private property. Send the photos and addresses to nominated, of the nominated properties to the Community of Economic Development Department via an email, which is planning@rigov.org. For questions, call 309-732-2905. Home program. Join us on Tuesday, June 12th, 2018 for an informational meeting on how to acquire land lots for $5 for new home construction. This meeting will, will be held from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Martin Luther King Jr. Center. Meet with city staff, lenders, home builders to learn more. Please call 309-732-2900 for more information. Starlight review, summer concerts. The Parks and Recreation Department's Free Concerts at Lincoln Park Series returns for its 62nd year. It's a long time. Concerts are every Tuesday night throughout the summer. Tomorrow night, the tailfins will perform at 7:00 PM along with dance lessons in single swing starting at 6:30 PM. Make it a night to enjoy the food, drink, and purchase from Hy-Vee Grill starting at 5:00 PM. Call the rain line at 309-732-7246 after 3:30 PM on Tuesday to check the status of the event and in climate weather. Community Crime Prevention Partnership Meetings. Please join the City of Rock Island Police Department on Wednesday, June 20th, 2018 for their monthly crime prevention meeting. This month's topics will focus on 911 Communication Center and its use. These educational meetings are intended to strengthen the partnerships with the citizens of Rock Island and the police department. Meeting is scheduled to start at 6:00 PM at the community room of the police department at 1212 Fifth Avenue in Rock Island. And lastly, real exciting news and thoughts is the championship of the Rock Island Girls' Softball. Start with congratulations from the city council, the city staff, and everybody on a great accomplishment. But with that, I guess versus me trying to explain anything else, if the coach and I don't know who else is here, the AD wouldn't mind stepping up real quick and they can do the update Rock Island on a great event like this.
All right, well, Coach Allison. We started the journey, I think it was May 22nd, we started regionals and then we beat our cross-town rival for regional championship, beat Moline 11 to 1. Then went on and went to sectionals, went down to Pecan, Illinois, and won two games down there. We played Edwardsville in the championship. We went 11 innings. We won 4 to 3. Then went to supersectionals in Nordeale, Illinois, and we won 3 to 0 against Manuka. And that put us in the semifinals in the state on Friday night. We won 3 to 1. And then on Saturday, we played a few north, 2 to 1 for Class 4A, Illinois State Champions. Lady Rocks.
Outstanding. Would anybody like to come up, do a little photo op?
That's fine.
All right.
Delaney, you have the trophy, right?
Yeah.
All right, we brought the trophy with us, been traveling around.
Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. And actually, instead of doing it in front here, some people get blocked, if they don't mind, would you file in right behind us? That way we can get the whole city council or whatever in. If you don't mind.
Stand behind us?
That's fine. Yep, we could sit here, we'll scoot in close. And you gals want to stand behind us? And we will work in that way.
Yes, that's the third war.
Pictures back there, if you taking a picture. All right. How's this? You get us all in, Jason? You get it in, Jason and Bill? Yeah, Jason's got it, whenever you need to be, Jason. There we go. We'll get that on Facebook and get some publicity for it.
Once again, gals, congratulations.
I guess it does take a good coach also, so. Thank you to him. You bet, thank you. And what we're gonna do is a good chance that two weeks from now, we'll have a proclamation for you guys. Whoever wants to show up next, two weeks from now, again, we will honor you with that. Okay? That those can make it. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Proclamation, item seven.
Proclamation declaring the week of June 17th through the 23rd, 2018 is bonus fund giving week.
I don't know if there's anybody here to receive that. Well, I'll read this off and then we'll let you guys give a little spiel. Whereas the John Deere Classic Tournament has been a community event for 48 years with philanthropy as a primary goal, and whereas the Birdies for Charity Program has been in existence for 25 years and helps raise donations for more than 500 area charities, and whereas the charitable giving for the Birdies for Charity Program to date has reached nearly $100 million to local nonprofit organizations, and whereas the direct contribution to the John Deere Classic Bonus Fund has matched dollar for dollar by the John Deere Foundation, allowing the Classic to give each participating Birdies for Charity organization an additional dollar each year, donation each year. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17th through the 23rd, 2018, Bonus Fund Giving Week in our city and urge all of our citizens to participate by giving to the John Deere Classic Bonus Fund to enhance our already very successful campaign in the community. Reminds me, I gotta get my Birdies for Charity turned in.
It's coming. It'll be here before you know it. Ashley, I'll say a few words. We're also gonna present you with some of our t-shirts we're selling this year.
Oh, great.
I mean, you know a little bit about golf. It's not easy, but we can make giving easy.
There you go. Excellent. You got a good volunteer back here, Bill Anderson.
We have a great volunteer. He does. Sure.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Ashley Hanson with the John Deere Classic and...
And I'm Jennifer Cress.
And we just want to, first of all, thank you for the support. The John Deere Classic truly is a community event, and so for Rock Island to take part in this Giving Week next week means a lot to all of us. The John Deere Classic is a 501(c)(3) ourselves, so a not-for, not-for-profit organization, and the bonus fund is our charitable arm. So it's our job every year to go out and fundraise so that we can give back to all of the individual charities that participate in Birdies for Charity. So there's over 500 of them locally and regionally, and the impact of that is pretty great, as you've all seen, I'm sure firsthand, so.
It's been an average of about 10% on top of, correct?
Over the past four years, we've given 10%.
So some charity raises $100,000 through birdies, you match it at $10,000.
Exactly, yes.
One of the best investments out there.
It is, we've heard that. And so the promise is 5%, but we always try to do our best to over-deliver and try to get to that 10% mark. So that's what we're doing this year, and we're thinking that it's gonna take us about $1 million or more to do that. So we're really hitting the streets and trying to get everybody involved, and you can go to our website and see a list of events that we have going on next week. Some of them include a celebrity bartending event at Barrel House in Moline. That's next Thursday. There's a Jimmy John's Day where they're donating a certain percentage of sales back to the bonus fund. So there's lots of ways to eat and take part in all the fun.
Great. I also know, I don't know if you mentioned that, I might have missed it, but John Deere funds all the administrative costs.
They do.
So there's no money he's taken out of it for administration costs.
100% of your dollar goes back to the charities.
110% goes to charities.
110%. Sure, yeah.
He's earning his dollars.
All right. On three. One, two, three. All right, let's give one more. One, two, three. Perfect. I know people coming. Item number seven. Oh, eight, excuse me.
Proclamation declaring June 23rd, 2018 is Rock Island County NAACP Day.
I think I saw Berlinda, so, all right. Whereas the National Organization of the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, is the oldest civil rights organization in the United States and was created in 1909 as the national call for justice of African-American due, due to the Springfield, Illinois race riots of August 1908, one of the most infamous events in Illinois and American history. And whereas the people from across the nation were shocked and dismayed that racial riots occurred in the adopted hometown of Abraham Lincoln, leading act, leading activists together to take up a struggle for the civil and political rights of black citizens, ultimately resulting in the funding of the National Association of the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, and whereas citizens of the United States of America, white and black, joined together to ensure justice and equality for all citizens. And whereas the Rock Island County NAACP Branch 3268 continues that historical and proactive tradition of justice for all citizens in the struggling, struggle for the civil and political rights in the City of Rock Island through numerous community events such as conducting political candidate forums, job junction, hosting impunjment, punishment, punishment, thank you, workshops, a community resource fair, a youth recognition dinner, youth scholarships, and the Freedom Fund Banquet and Image Awards held on Saturday, June 23rd, at 2018. And whereas the City of Rock Island acknowledges the Rock Island County NAACP for its dedication to the struggle of the civil and political rights of citizens of color. Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 23rd, 2018 to be Rock Island County NAACP Day in Rock Island, a day dedicated to unity and justice in the City of Rock Island for all residents of the community.
Now, you know I can't get in front of a mic without speaking. As I'm tearing this up, right? Okay, good. Well, I tell you, I will say, I'm Berlinda Tyler-Jamison, and I'm the President of the Rock Island County NAACP, and I see a number of members here, which always pleases me. I will tell you that the NAACP does not take this proclamation for granted. It's an affirmation of the work that we do in our community for all people. It benefits all people, and this proclamation is your affirmation of what we do, just as we affirm what we do and what we do with the City of Rock Island. So I want to thank you, and I also want to say that we're very proud because Rock Island County has the most diverse branch in the entire state of Illinois. That is not anything to be snoozed at, okay? That's not to be overlooked. So again, thank you very much. I couldn't have written this better myself. Oh, sure.
Berlinda, are tickets still for sale? Do you want to make that announcement? Do you want to make that announcement? You're welcome.
Thank you, Berlinda. And I know Alderman Geenan's gonna be representing the city and reading that that evening also, so unfortunately, I'm not able to be there. Okay, item number eight.
Nine.
Nine, gosh darn. I can't count.
You keep forgetting you crossed it off. Proclamation declaring June 2018 as Pride Month.
I believe, Michelle, you're here to receive this, and so whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT communities of Rock Island are an integral part of the vibrant culture and climate of Rock Island, and whereas the diverse LGBT community continues to, continues to contribute to the widespread academic, economic, artistic, and social spheres within the, in and around our greater community. And whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate, man, the Stonewall Riots which occurred in June of 1969 and are generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBT rights movement. And whereas the LGBT communities of Rock Island have thoughtfully organized, numerous workshops, sporting events, receptions, festivals, concerns, plays, dances, and hosts of other inspired activities to participate in during the celebration of Pride Month. And whereas, one of the most historic and highly anticipated events, the First Annual Pride Parade took place on Saturday, June 9th, 2018, being the second bi-state parade in the county. Whereas the City of Rock Island remains committed to protecting the civil rights of lesbians, gays, bisexuals, and transgenders, communities as the power and the purpose of this iconic event proven vital in our unified efforts to forge a more open and just social society and whereas Rock Island's active and involvement lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender communities make an indelible impact upon the quality of life in Rock Island, and the Pride Month serves as a call, as a call to our collective, can, can, this is, man, can't speak tonight, to persist in the fight of erotic prejustice and discrimination elsewhere, everywhere. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim June 20, June 2018 as Pride Month in the City of Rock Island, and encourage all Rock Islanders to recognize and the enduring efforts and ongoing contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender committees within the city and our county.
A year ago yesterday, we had a rally in Centennial Park, and we marched over into Rock Island. At the end of that march, we went over to the Black Sheep and we had a drink. We said to each other, what could we do to get more people to come to our rallies? I flippantly said, we should have a parade. Reverend Rich Hendrick said, Michelle, you're in charge of our parade next year. As a member of Rock Island's business community for 25 years in the district, I thought that the Rock Island was the first place that we needed to do something, and I chose to have the parade in Rock Island. We then decided that both rivers should be, both sides of the river should be included, so we made it a bi-state parade. Over the last nine days, we had different events, festivities, and activities for all ages, all community, families, allies. We had 2,000 people come to Pride Fest this, the first weekend. We had movie nights, we had family days, we had pub crawls, and then it culminated to the parade this Saturday. If anybody was to witness the 50-some floats and participants, plus the amount of people that followed us from Rock, from Davenport into Rock Island, it was quite a sight. I want to thank the city, the city council, Judith, the mayor, for helping us do this. We're gonna make it bigger and better next year. We got a lot of work to do. There has been a lot of press over the last week about bigotry, but we will not let that overshadow what we've done, and we're gonna make this a better place to live in. Thank you.
All right, item 10.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing to consider a redevelopment plan and project designation of the Century Woods redevelopment project area and the adoption of tax increment allocation financing.
All right, hereby close the meeting and open a public meeting, hearing. Chandler, you gonna start this out?
All right. That was a lot more fun than what we're gonna go through now. Tax increment financing, one of the greatest things ever. Okay, as part of the process for establishing a TIFF, there's a number of things we have to do, and we're reaching the end of the road, and, thanks, Tim. So what we have here is, is a PowerPoint on the findings that were done by Kane McKenna, the city's hired gun, if you will, the consultant, to determine if a TIFF is eligible for the Century Woods. Then we'll do another one after this for Heather Ridge as well. All right. So what we have here, we have the, we'll talk a little bit about the redevelopment project and the plan, TIFF mechanism, the factors qualifying area as a TIFF district, and a tentative schedule, which we've lived through most of it so far, and kind of what's left to go on our TIFF. Okay, the plan of the project, the background. We've done a comprehensive planning process, and the city's identified an objective to encourage and maintain quality, affordable housing within the Rock Island community. It's a pretty basic element. We want us to make sure we have good, quality housing here in the City of Rock Island. So through the comprehensive planning process, the city identified tax increment financing as a tool that can encourage economic growth and redevelopment within the community. TIFF can be a very powerful tool. If you're not in a CDBG eligible area or opportunity zone, which just came out, TIFF is a way to make things happen. So the city was exploring the possibility of establishing a TIFF for the Century Woods Apartments area to achieve a goal of substantial upgrades and improvements to the complex. The reason why we're doing this is Millenia Housing came forward and said, we're interested in purchasing both of these projects. Talk about Century Woods here first. And they need some help. They need some help in making sure that this project would go forward, and how can we assist them? So TIFF was the only eligible funding mechanism that we had. And this is not the best aerial, it didn't come through very well, but as you can see, inside the boundaries here is Century Woods. It's a massive number of property, buildings, I believe it's 43 buildings, which are, have some age. So in order to find a way to make sure that these things would be renovated, interiors, exterior, landscaping, and make good quality housing, this is a part, a program that the city said that we can, we should look at, and we should go forward. And that's where Kane McKenna was hired to go through the process. So. The TIFF plan is going to compile, complies with the legal provisions of the TIFF Act, Illinois TIFF Act. The TIFF must be, must have contiguous parcels, and it must exceed an acre and a half in size. The but for, basically means that this would not happen but for the TIFF being created, was met because redevelopment is only feasible if the utilization of tax increment financing, meaning this probably wouldn't happen, this project would not happen without the ability of creating a TIFF to help the developer renovate the facilities. Century Woods was determined to qualify under the guidelines of the TIFF Act as a conservation area. What does that mean? Conservation area? I could read you this whole 90-page document, which I'm not gonna, cause Virgil will probably kill me.
Don't say that.
But basically, conservation area means any improved area within the boundaries of a redevelopment project area located within the territorial limits of the municipality in which 50% or more of the structures in the area have an age of 35 years or more. So conservation area typically, you look at, you hear about, it's like, oh, we're gonna save the green space, or something of that nature. This is, is a term meaning that most of the, most of the properties will then have an age of 35 years or more. So if you hear that term, you understand what we're talking about. Let's see here. So then, talking about TIFF being a tool. TIFF is a very exceptionally powerful tool that states have created and adopted various different laws and rules, uses within TIFF in order to help communities achieve economic, economic development goals. So just kind of a little diagram on how TIFF works to help you achieve some of those things. But this is a real good, I think, a very clear visual of what TIFF really means. When you establish a TIFF, the base assessment is the bucket on the left, meaning all the current taxes that are paid to the school system, the county, the township, and the city currently, that assessed value goes into the left-hand bucket, the large one. Then as development occurs and the assessment goes up, that increment is put into the little bucket, meaning those are the dollars that are available within the designated TIFF area to be used for improvements. So it's kind of a real nice visual on what TIFF means. Go forward. Now, the next slide is obviously a representation of what we would like to see happen. Yes, a constant steady growth is something we would really like to see, but we also know that over time, things like this happen. To be more realistic, there will be some downturns, there will be some readjustments. But as long as we're creating increment, as long as we have this little area right in here, that's the money that goes to pay for the improvements to continue to foster economic development within the TIFF area. Okay, so that's a little bit more of a realistic look. So, real quickly, and then I can bring up Mark Cipiel's here from Millenia, he can answer any questions about what's going to be done, or proposed to be done within the project itself, which I thought would be a good thing for you guys to hear. The qualifying factors for why this redevelopment project... a good thing for you guys to hear. The qualifying factors for why this redevelopment project area was found to be eligible for a TIF. Kane McKenna determined that all three structures located within the, the proposed area, Century Woods, were 35 years in age or older, actually around 75 years. Now, as we do our, our analysis, as we work within the TIF statute, there are maximum possible factors for the statute that you could be eligible for, there are 13. In order to qualify to, and determine that you are eligible to move forward with the TIF, you need three. Well, it was determined by Kane McKenna that Century Woods qualified on six elements. Those elements are lagging, estimated assessed value, obsolescence, elemental cleanup, lack of community planning, deterioration, inadequate, and inadequate utilities. So there's quite a few reasons why Century Woods does qualify for a TIF. This was the tentative TIF schedule that was presented, and we are now, right down here, second to last. This is our public hearing that we're working on right now. We've done quite a few public meetings. We've had meetings with the Joint Review Board. The Joint Review Board is a body that I do report to on our TIF every year, how we spend our money. It's comprised of the underlying taxing entities, the county, the township, the school board, and the city, where they make recommendations going forward on, this is how you spent your money last year. We'd like, we like the way you did it. Sounds good. Financial, good sound plan, great. We took these plans to both of, both of these plans to the Joint Review Board for review, had public hearings, um, and the Joint Review Board made a recommendation to move forward. They liked the plans, they liked the idea of the projects, and so they said, yes, go forward to council with our, with our recommendation for approval. However, obviously, approval rests here with this board. So, after this public hearing, the City of Rock Island will be able to sit, uh, or, or consider an ordinance approving both TIFs anywhere from 14 to 90 days from now. It's all up to council. So there's been a tremendous amount of work on this. A lot of it's behind the scenes, number crunching and researching ordinances, which is always a good time. Everyone likes doing that. But from what we've heard, our, our meetings with Kane McKenna and their analysis, this seems to really be an opportune time for the City of Rock Island to create a TIF for the redevelopment of Century Woods, to encourage development, and to move forward, and create good quality housing here in the City of Rock Island. So that's the basis of this. This is a public hearing, so I believe it's open to the public. Give me questions for me, or how do you want to work this, Mayor?
If you would, can you go back to your two little red buckets?
There you go.
That's, that's a great illustration, Chandler.
Thank you.
So, not only for myself, but for the, the audience and the people who are watching, uh, on, on TV. The first large bucket is, you said, the taxes that are already being collected by the various taxing entities, including the city and the school, district, et cetera.
Correct.
The small red bucket represented new taxes, or new tax dollars that would be collected on, uh, an approved value or assessment of the property, um, and that money is used for paying for the improvements. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, they can only be used for TIF-eligible expenses, meaning, uh, the way that we've, uh, been negotiating this agreement, and which will, if we decide to do this and you guys move forward, we'll bring agreement in front of you, but it's TIF-eligible expenses, meaning the renovation of the facilities. And so we have lined out very carefully that it shall not be for this, but it shall be for these items here, blah, blah, blah. And so that'll be lined out in the, in the agreement.
Actually, the money goes to Millennial Housing, correct?
It goes to payback, the, the, yes, they get paid, but only for the TIF-eligible expenses that they're seeking reimbursement for.
The increase in the amount of money of the taxes will go to Millennial Housing?
A portion of, of that increment, the small bucket, yes, goes to Millennial Housing to reimburse them for the improvements that we agreed that they would do, they're TIF-eligible.
So, the increase in property tax, or assessment, I guess, it can only be increased by assessable improvements, right? So my question is, what, I mean, I've heard, you know, replacing cabinets, or bathrooms, or things like that, but as I understand, those are not assessable improvements. So what is Millenia Housing proposing to do that will be assessable improvements, and do we have a dollar figure estimated as to what amount of increase to the property's value, which increases the assessed value, can we expect from that?
Sure. And that's one of the hardest things to calculate, exactly what that increment will be that, that's kicked off at, after the increased assessment. Yes, cabinets, interior improvements, upgrades to, the appliances upgrade to the, uh, physical structure, do actually have an effect, a positive effect on assessment. It's not the biggest piece. The improvements to the exterior, improvements to the windows, improvements to the roof, those all do play a part in a positive, uh, effect on the assessment going up. The fact that at, at Century Woods, some of the, some of the, uh, the projects, some of the, the buildings will actually receive, um, a little bit more attention to the exterior, those things do count towards this. Heather Ridge, they're actually looking at a community center to be, to be built as well.
Yeah, adding square footage and building things certainly does improve it.
But one of the biggest ones is acquisition price.
Yeah.
That's, so, if you don't have someone who purchases the property, it doesn't go up. We have someone who's willing and able to purchase the property, and so therefore you take the new acquisition price, which will increase the assessment, and all the improvements will also add to that assessment as well, over time. It takes a bit for everything to be fully assessed and to pay the, the following year.
Right, as long as it is a quote, "good sale" from the township assessor's office, then it increases the, the assessed value amount. Uh, I guess, so do we have? I don't know. I, I, I'm not an expert in, in this field. I just have been told by people who do know a lot more than I do, that replacing a roof does not increase your assessed value on your property. So I'm just, I'm confused as to what the developer is proposing to do that's going to actually increase the assessed value, which is gonna be putting money into the little bucket here.
I would say that the, the most critical piece is the fact, is there, there's an acquisition. If there's no acquisition.
It's gonna have the same property.
Assessment does not go up.
Right.
There's an acquisition with a new price.
But the, the property, in my, in my view, and please tell me if I'm wrong, the amount of property taxes that the developer will pay into the future will be frozen at the big bucket level for the next 20 years. Now, please be careful with the, your response on that, because that number stays the same, you're right. But the, all of the increase, and it may be a big increase, but it's the developer paying it, being paid with the increase as well, because there will be a higher in assessment. But what the municipalities will receive is only what the level of the big, large bucket is, my view.
On whatever, on whatever deadline they choose to attach to it. So it could be-
I'm sorry?
On whatever year attachment to it, right? The agreement's to on a 23-year or a 20-year?
Right.
Or specific dates?
Or it's a date and/or dollars.
Right, correct.
Whichever cap first. And, and you gotta remember, if there is no increase or very little, you don't spend it. You don't go negative spending. So if there isn't an, an increase, or is not what anticipated, we only reimburse what that, if, if there, whatever that difference is. You never dig into the original big bucket.
Exactly, Mayor. If, for some reason, the assessment ends up being down here, this blue line goes down this way, there's no increment created. Therefore, nothing gets paid to the developer. So, the purpose of TIF is to create increment, is to create an additional assessment, to create investment, which creates that, which then can be used for the renovations and other ways to, to spur more economic development.
And that's why typically you do a dollar amount first, more than a time, because it could go out farther, if your value, if your assessment didn't go up, it could take it out farther to hit that dollar amount, or it could happen sooner. It, and so either way, so typically you do a dollar amount first before you do a capping. The TIF does expire after 23 years, or whatever it is, so you can't go beyond that, but-
Right.
So, there is, the exposure, uh, we don't lose anything. There's no exposure of losing what you got.
And I think of the alternative. When you're driving down 92, no funds put towards redevelopment in that area. Who's gonna come and support you? Who's gonna come and bring a business when you don't want to take care of your own area? So, what is the alternative? Do we just leave it that way? Leave it how it is? We have someone coming here, which I feel we should welcome with open arms and make this deal work the best way possible, 'cause we all benefit.
Well, a whole bunch of people sacrifice so that the people that currently own the property, that receive subsidized rents from the residents, from the federal government, and state and local governments, that they can, uh, be, they can live there. I mean, the, what about the, the man that owns it? Why not just force his, him into reinvested, reinvesting in his own property?
Yeah, the issue is, I'd like to know the definition of who sacrifices, because nobody loses money. The money doesn't come out that-
You use the, you, my view is you lose the future value of money.
Assuming it goes-
My property taxes in 20 years, Mr. Mayor, have doubled at my home.
And if you never improve it, what, what extra?
It could go down. They could petition for it to be dropped because it's deteriorated in value.
Exactly.
And so that-
That's the landlord's fault.
And, and that's exactly, but at this point, it may, it probably won't happen if you don't do this incentive, because there's no payback. People usually make investments to get a return on their investment. If you don't get a return, I won't, nobody's gonna invest it. And so, at this point, the cost to renovate this place is beyond a return on investment. And so, they won't do it, and it'll continue to deteriorate. You have continued blight, and even more than blight is the quality of housing that the people have to live in. Uh, that even, you know, is probably more, you can't put a dollar amount to that, uh, per se, and that's, the issue is that, I'll say, everybody deserves to have a good, quality place to live in. Uh, and, and that's the, the biggest, to me, the biggest advantage to this thing, more than tax evaluations and everything else, is that you get aesthetics improved, but you get, how many of our households are there, better quality of living in both resident, in both locations. Uh, and that's what people deserve to have, at a decent rent. And that's what we're lacking.
Chandler, what would you say is the likelihood that that property will be improved without using TIF?
I'd say this one would be rather difficult. It, it is an older facility. It does require quite a bit to be done. Um, and I would say it would be difficult, can't say can't be done, but it would take a lot more work to go find an investor, an open market, who'd like to take this project on.
Do you think it's time that we listen to the developer, and let him speak and give his view on it?
Yep, I have Mark Sipius.
It's an open, public meeting, so.
Mark Sipius from Millenia is here to answer questions about what they're doing and, and, and all the other good stuff you might want to know.
Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate being here again. It has been a while. We've been focusing on these projects for over two years, um, trying to make them happen. So, um, I just like to start off by sort of reminding everyone what we're doing, what we're trying to do. We're trying to improve the homes of low-income tenants in your community. Century Woods is a large, 17-acre site composed of 43 buildings, originally constructed in 1941 as workforce housing for the World War II arsenal industry in your community. Formerly known as Arsenal Court, it was identified on a community plan in the late 1990s for demolition because of its condition, and because of the social ills that formed in that area at the time. I also want to reiterate that all 230 rental homes at Century Woods are, and will continue to be, 100% affordable and restricted to low-income residents of your community under a long-term Section 8 contract long after this project is complete. What we're trying to do here is transform Century Woods, bring it up to the standards that we all live in. Everyone sitting in this, in this room lives at a certain standard of living, and we're trying to bring it up to that standard of 2018 rental livability for affordable, at affordable rents. To do that, we have to work on something we like to call a transformation of the property for the residents. It starts with unit interiors, including new in-unit carpet, new hard, hard surface flooring in certain rooms, new appliances, cabinets, new finishes, energy efficiency improvements in the units, including, for this project, completely new HVAC systems, lighting, and low-flow plumbing fixtures. This means removing all the old boilers and radiators, and installing a brand-new HVAC system, replacing hot water heaters, replacing electrical panels, light fixtures, installing new smoke detectors, new toilets, showers, vanities, new kitchen cabinets, countertops, sinks, replacing selected ranges, selected refrigerators, new range hoods, new vinyl flooring, new paint throughout the entire interiors, walls, ceilings, and doors, new door hardware, and bringing it up to the full accessibility requirements of 2018 in 23 units at Century Woods. On the exterior of the residential buildings, you'll have new lighting, windows, and masonry tuck pointing, and as needed, certain roofs will be repaired and replaced on an as-needed basis. Century Woods site itself will have new signage, new landscaping, a new playground, community gardens, bike racks, a large central picnic pavilion, and all site amenities will be made fully accessible, and handicap parking will be added for code compliance and ease of pedestrian travel. A new property-wide security camera system will be installed. Throughout the site, there will be new lighting, drainage improvements, and concrete and curb replacement in certain areas. The existing community building will be renovated and, with new finishes and flooring, and energy-efficient lighting and HVAC system as well, and accessibility improvements. In addition to all these hard-cost improvements, we're also adding a slew of social services that we think would be relevant and beneficial to the tenants, so that they can access what is sometimes difficult, uh, to integrate themselves into the broader community here in Rock Island. That's what we're trying to do, and we've been proposing this for almost, it's been about almost two and a half years, and, uh, we appreciate your consideration for support of this project. But we need the TIFs to do this. This will not happen without the TIFs. We're on the edge of, we're at a point right now where this is pivotal. We've, we've presented it, we've gotten through all sorts of hurdles with HUD, um, and the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program of the State of Illinois. This scope is set. Um, for better or worse, it's set. Uh, we have some contingency that has a little bit of flexibility, but it's set because we've submitted all of our applications for these, this, this low-income housing tax credit financing, and the HUD loans that, that need to finance these projects, that we need to finance these projects, because there's no other way, there's no other way to get the level of debt on these projects that, that it takes to do this kind of wholesale transformation without a HUD loan. So, we're at a point right now where we're ready to move forward, and I would, I really appreciate you guys considering making a positive decision on this.
Any questions?
I have, I have a question, but I don't, I don't know that you can answer the question. Maybe somebody from the city can answer, who has got, uh, a longer memory than I do. When we transformed, we, the city, transformed Arsenal Courts to Century Woods, was that just a management agreement, or was that an ownership, uh, transfer from the city to Century Woods? I don't recall.
I think it was, I don't know for fact, but I think it was a sale, and I don't think it's from the city.
Okay.
It was, because the city's never owned it.
The housing authority.
It was a housing authority.
Okay.
Owned it and sold it, and, and actually sold it to the current people that own it, or I, I assume it's the current, but whoever changed it.
And so, now transforming the project again, uh, a number of years later, uh, is it going to be an ownership change, then?
It will, by necessity, be an ownership change, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay?
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, first off, thank you for your interest in investing in Rock Island. The residents of Century Woods and Heather Ridge certainly do deserve livable communities, or home, so thank you very much. I hope you do not interpret my questions as, as opposition or, or any- I hope you do not interpret my questions as, as opposition or, or any sort of offense. I just, I want to make sure that we thoroughly understand and make the correct decision. So, number one, you assured us that it would remain a Section Eight property. Is there any objection, or is it even possible? I'm not sure. But is there any way that we can word the TIF ordinance for this property that if at any time in the future it ceases to become Section Eight, then the developer is no longer eligible to receive TIF money as that reimbursement? Is that, first off, is that okay with you, and secondly, is that doable?
The second part, I'm not sure about.
Sure.
The first part, I can say, without hesitation, we are an affordable housing developer, and Section Eight, long-term Section Eight is, is what we do.
And when you say long-term contract, I mean, HUD funding levels for Section Eight changes each, does that get you in a locked term? Is this a guaranteed thing? Or could funding dry up if there's no HUD money for Section Eight vouchers?
You're, you're raising something that is, um, it's totally outside of, of our control, obviously, but Section Eight is, you know, a longstanding program. For this, for this particular project, actually for both of, both Century Woods and Heather Ridge, upon the closing of the acquisition by the new entity, the new ownership, it would be a twenty-year hap, it would be a twenty-year housing assistance payments contract would be in place at that time, plus the, the existing remaining term on the existing hap contract would get tacked on, and I don't have the exact number of how many years is left over, but I think it's maybe thirteen or fourteen years on that for, for Century Woods. You're talking right there, as part of our agreement with HUD, that those contracts would have those terms. Now, whether or not, that's our contract, you know, but whether or not something happens to, with that contract, I mean, it's outside of our control. It would be certainly against what we do as a company.
I believe our city attorney would be best at answering that, Dave.
Uh, the, the second end, uh, question, or the second part of the question is something that we consult with Kathy Orr. She is a specialist in the TIF area, has been practicing in that area for about forty years. I would be happy to send that question to her and send out the response to council without any trouble, but I don't want to put any words in her mouth. She's dedicated her life to that area of law, and I'm sure she could tell us off the top of her head.
Sure.
Thank you.
If, if it can be explored, and, and if doable included, if you have no objection, then I think that would perhaps rest some potential concerns. Secondly, so we have opportunity zones. I believe, is, is Century Woods included in one of our opportunity zones that we were awarded?
It is.
Okay. Uh, has your.
Yes.
Has your firm done, are you familiar with opportunity zones?
I have limited familiarity with opportunity zones.
Okay, yeah, it was included in the recent federal government's tax reform bill, and the, the governor just appointed different zones throughout the state. Anyway, um, well, I guess it's an option, we're, we are still learning how to fully utilize this opportunity zone, but I would encourage you to explore it. It seems like a good tool for investors to invest in communities that have been disinvested for many years, and so maybe there, this was another way that you can add on to improving on Century Wood, or for future, I mean, there is some hesitate, admittedly, there is some hesitation to using TIF because we were talking about not taking from anybody, but the reality is, we do take from the schools and the county and things like that. I, I get it, you know, whatever. We, we can not argue about that, but, um, TIF has its controversy. We'll just lay it at that. And so, for future development projects, opportunity zones don't seem to have that sort of baggage, so I would.
And I'm not sure if we sign a TIF, if that makes you ineligible for an opportunity zone. We'd have to look into that, too. You would have to look into that.
Yeah, this is, this is all new.
So, it might be a better deal for you to do.
Just something I wanted to ask you, if you had experience about, like I said, we are still learning about these opportunity zones, and I am trying to figure out how, as a city, we can most efficiently utilize these designations for improvements in those zones. Final question, what is Millenia Housing's procurement practices related to doing the work? I imagine you don't have construction crews that do the work yourself, you contract with, with businesses?
We have an affiliate general contractor called American Preservation Builders. They will be the general contractor for these projects, and we would seek local labor.
Okay, you do prioritize local?
We, we will prioritize local labor.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was that, American?
American Preservation Builders is the name.
Okay, American Preservation Builders.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. That answers all of my questions.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Is there anybody out there that would like to speak in opposition of this? Anybody in opposition of this? Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this? No one to speak in favor? Okay.
Is that for Century Woods?
I'm sorry?
Are we only speaking of Century?
Only speaking of Century Woods. We're gonna do this, repeat this for Heather. Okay? Yep, no, you're welcome. Yes.
Will any families speak this way during the renovation?
Okay. All right. If that's the case, then I'd like to close the open meeting and reconvene the city council We are then at item number eleven.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing to consider a redevelopment plan and project designation of the Heather Ridge redevelopment project area and the adoption of tax increment allocation financing.
I will close the regular council meeting and open up a public meeting, so. Yes, exactly. We got one after this. Chandler, it's yours.
All right, uh, we're back. Uh, this is, as I mentioned, the previous one is for Century Woods. This one is for Heather Ridge. So, we have another one, another redevelopment project. I can be rather brief going through this, because the slides are pretty much the same until we get to the good stuff. Of course, we got this. This is the actual area, here, but, um, the buckets and the graphs, but here's really the, the part here that I think is most critical when talking about Heather Ridge, if I had kept up. Okay. Came and kind of did their analysis on Heather Ridge, and they found that it does qualify as a conservation area under statutory criteria set forth in the TIF Act. They found that all twenty-three structures located within the proposed redevelopment project area were thirty-five years in age or older, actually around forty-five years of age. So, once again, the possible factors per statute are thirteen. You need a minimum number of factors, the minimum number of factors qualified for the statute is three, and Heather Ridge qualified for five, meaning lagging, estimated assessed value, obsolescence, environmental cleanup, lack of community planning, and deterioration. So, very, very similar. And once again, the TIF schedule, noting that we are on the last public hearing, that we've been on this long road, and that if we do decide to go forward, we would look at it, an ordinance coming before council within fourteen to ninety days establishing a TIF, and then after that, the TIF agreement. So, kind of quick, but it's the same type of discussion, it's just the elements are a little bit different. This one has five that make it qualify for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Mark would answer any questions on the actual project as well.
I got a question. Uh, back to your slide about the five eligible, yeah, that one. Lack of community planning is one of them. Yet, uh, the City of Rock Island's Planning Commission is not hosting, or not meeting this month because there's nothing on the agenda. I guess I've raised, um, I've raised issue with having boards and commissions that don't meet because of not having anything to do supposedly, nothing on the agenda, but here we have, one of the reasons that this is eligible for a TIF is because there's no community planning. So, what, why, what is our Planning Commission doing, and why aren't they planning things?
Well, my, my question would be, what would they be planning on this site that's, that's established, and that is, that is mature?
Whatever the qualifying definition of a lack of a community planning, they can be doing that. And this isn't a specific question, I just.
Well, no, I'd be happy to answer what the lack of community planning means, but per the, the TIF statute.
Okay.
All right. The proposed redevelopment project area was developed prior or without the benefit of guidance of a community plan. This means that the development occurred prior to the adoption by the municipality of a comprehensive or, or other community plan, or that the plan was not followed at the time of the area's development. This factor must be documented by evidence of adverse or incompatible land use relationships, inadequate street layout, improper subdivision, parcels of inadequate shape and size to meet contemporary development standards, or other evidence demonstrating an absence of effective community planning. Now, at Heather Ridge, I would definitely say there's a lack of community planning because there are no sidewalks on the west side of, of the street. We have a school directly across the street, and there's a high population of children that, that reside at Heather Ridge, so there's a little bit of a problem there. So, to say that the community, that the Planning Commission, because this is an established, mature property, if we're looking at adding on to it, meaning other properties and building more buildings, absolutely would look at it. But because this is established, mature, and, and that qual, that, what I just read there states that there are some issues as far as community planning. It's not like a lack of plan that they didn't go view it or anything of sorts, it's just that there are elements within, and sometimes the title is a little misleading, a little...
I understand. It's, we have, we have a number of conservation plans, neighborhood plans, things like that, and they can be revisited. I imagine our comprehensive plan was put into place since Heather Ridge existed, and so, uh, just, again, I'm, I'm using this as a general point of encouraging more proactive or revisiting previous plans by our Planning Commission, and just trying to get more citizens involved in, in that sort of entity, so that's all.
Clarification, all the streets in between the buildings, I'll say, be either one, are not city-owned, are they?
On the interior?
In the interior.
No, I believe they, those are purely.
All private property?
Private property.
That whole area that is encompassed is all private property?
Yes, sir.
And so, once again, they talk about community or improvements and everything else, we don't make that, those investments, the developer makes those investments, whether it be streets and curbs improvements, whether it be a, 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 a utility or a civic room or building, those would all be, need to be private investments that are involved in the community planning that the city doesn't have control over. Any other questions? Mark, I don't know if you want to speak of anything different of this, or, numbers are maybe a little different on number of people, but.
I just want to, um, I'm sorry if I got a little excited on the last presentation with Century Woods, so I just apologize if, if.
You're fine.
Got a little excited about it, so.
Not at all.
But, that's right. I'd be happy to go through the improvements there. There, some of them are similar, some of them are different, however you guys prefer to, it's essentially, it's essentially the same position for this property.
Does anybody have any questions, Mark, or on this one?
You know what? Yeah, I think there.
They, I think they may, and I'll open it up to the public. Oh, go ahead. Okay.
Thank you.
So, is there anybody out there that opposes this project at Heather? Anybody oppose it? Is there anybody out there in favor of this project? Would you, do you wish to speak, please?
If you would.
Yes, if you would, please, and if you could state your name and address, I appreciate it, and I think there's a signup sheet in there. If you could put that up there. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Dave.
I'm sorry. Just, just for clarification, you don't have to give your address, but if you're, just your city of residence would be helpful, if you would, please.
Thank you.
My name is Wendy McDonald, and I actually see a lot of familiar faces. I actually work in an assessing office. I'm a, um, full-time deputy assessor at South Rock Island Township, and I actually live in Heather Ridge. I am a resident there, and I've been following this since, uh, probably close to the beginning of it. I sat on the joint review committee, and I'm speaking on behalf of not all of the tenants, but most of the tenants. We are very excited for this project. I don't know if you're aware, but I believe Heather Ridge first was built back in the early seventies, and I don't believe that it has been updated since around the early seventies. We've had carpet installed, but most of the bare fixtures, the closet doors, things like that are all original, the old metal, um, you know, I think the owners do the best that they can do with the monies that they have, but unfortunately, I think with any investment, you're there to make a little bit of money as well. So, we are very excited with what our future holds. Like Mayor Tomes had said, we, I think that sometimes when you think of subsidized housing, you think of people that do not work, um, and I think if you ever stopped by Heather Ridge, you would see, I'm not sure about Century Woods, I cannot speak for them, but a great majority of the people work full-time there. And I think that, um, we deserve a home that, um, is a quality home as well, and I think that that's kind of what I'm here to say on behalf of the residents there, that, um, yes, we live in subsidized housing, um, but we, we work hard for our money and we pay our rent as well, and we're just very excited, um, with the new updates that Millenia is offering us, um, and we just would like you to please consider this TIF. I know that there are a lot of questions, and to answer yours, a little bit about the roof and things like that, um, one thing you have to think of with assessing properties, properties are not updated, you have a huge depreciation factor that goes into consideration. So, if a property, even though a roof, new windows do not add to your assessment, depreciation is considered into those. So, when we have not had updates since the seventies, our depreciation factor is huge. With, with all of these updates, our assessment factor is going to go up to where it should be, so we aren't going to have those depreciation factors considered in. So, that kind of answers a little bit about your question. So, I just want to thank you for taking the time to listen, um, and you guys all have a good evening.
Thank you. Did you, did you write your name and?
Oh, I did not, and I also took your papers. I'm so sorry.
That's all that works.
I guess you want those back.
And thank you for taking time to come out here. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak in favor of? Anybody else to speak in favor? If not, we'll close the open meeting?
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was hoping some of the other people in the audience would, but I would. The young lady that just spoke, she knows what she's talking about, because she does work in South Rock Island Township, and there's some other people out here that have property and that, and that live there. I was hoping all of them would get up and speak, but her presentation was to the extent that it covered everything, uh, with the exception of the money, okay, and the differences between Century Wood and Heather. Okay, I believe this is a sixty-six million-dollar project, is that correct, Chandler? For the two of them are? Both, okay? Forty-four million in Century Woods and twenty-two million, correct, in Heather. This is a great opportunity for our city, okay? Both projects, and the people, I have been out there with them, have walked through it, looked at it, uh, we're gonna have a community center, correct, in Heather Ridge. So, that's what it's being called.
Yes.
Yes. So, I'm in favor of it. The people that I've talked to that live there and the people that live outside of there are happy about it, as someone said, there's no sidewalks there, okay? I have no sidewalk in front of my house, okay? Makes a big difference when you don't have a sidewalk, and you might know, how many children live there?
Every house and every department building, I believe.
Has it, has how many?
At least one hundred and sixty-nine, at least.
At least one hundred and sixty-nine children, okay? They go to school right across the street, or some of them go to, uh, I think, what is it, Thomas Jefferson in Mylan, some of them go to Rocky or whatever. This is the future for these children, to have a brand-new home to live in and to be proud of. So, as you can tell, I'm cheerleading, I'm wearing Palm Palm squad, so.
I want to see that.
I bet you will.
All right. This officially closes the open public meeting and reopens the council meeting. We're at item number twelve.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from Richard Lopez for an amendment to an approved special use permit to allow a new lighted attached sign, two unlit freestanding pennant signs, four unlit freestanding yard signs, and/or a lighted manual message board, all to be located in the west front yard.
All right. Let's close the council meeting, open the public hearing, and would, uh, Richard like to come up? There you are, I saw you someplace, and explain.
Okay, basically, it's just, uh, four yard signs that just tell people what we have to offer in the restaurant. A lot of people don't know what we have, we don't have a whole lot of money for advertising, so I went with the signs, just so, you know, it says breakfast, French onion. so I went with the signs, just so, you know, it says breakfast, French onion soup, steak, chops, and then the pennant flags, I put those up because I had a guy come in and ask us if we were a vape shop. And I'm like, no, we're not a vape shop, we're, we're a bistro, we sell food, and so we put a flag that says restaurant, and a flag that says open. She had a flag out there before that was stuck to that sign, so I didn't think that was anything, and I just, I just need to, you know, get the word out what we do, so that's what the signs are for, just a little bit more, you know, let the traffic see, because like, you know, I have bills I have to pay, and the more people come in, the better it is.
Sure. Does anybody have any questions for him?
Could, for the public to know where this address is, what restaurant he's talking about, in this, it does not state that.
3055 38th Street, right next to Ganson's, or right next to Saki, it used to be Ganson's, and now it's Igor's Bistro.
Right, I knew that, and the council probably knew it, but in this, it doesn't say, state that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, one question.
Yes.
Just to clarify, are you looking just to put the signs that you have in the yard before, or are you looking to get like a LED lit up?
I would like to get a small LED that can, that can, you know, we can put messages on, and then those four signs would go, the two flags would go.
Okay. And the sign, will that be freestanding in the yard, or affixed to the building?
It'll be freestanding in the yard.
Facing north and south?
Yep.
Different. Yeah, I believe that's something different than what was requested. What was requested is to keep it like it is right now, because it currently does not meet code or zone.
Right.
And so, my understanding, your application was to keep exactly what you have now.
Yes, and then...
Not do a new sign.
Yeah, and then, right, but if, alternatively, we want to do that, and then there was a sign attached to the building, that's not a sign, it just says, it's a neon light that says Igor's.
Right, and, and so, I hate to complicate things, but that would be a separate issue in a separate time, if you want to change it from what the application or what you've suggested now. So, you would come back a different time, and you'd talk to the planning commission and zoning and everyone else, if you were to go to an LED or whatever, even on the building or in front, you'd have to come again.
I thought it said it on there, the way I read.
My understanding, the current decision we're making is whether the signs say or go.
That's correct. That's correct. The current ones. I thought, I thought I heard you say as an alternative.
Yeah, I thought, that's what it said on my request, that...
Yeah.
Do you have any?
Go ahead, Dave.
With regard to the public hearing, what has to happen is there has to be notice given to, as to what you're actually considering, and it's, it's my understanding from reading the memo that was put together, and maybe Chandler or someone from your office can, can clarify, but whatever is on the notice is the only thing that we can consider at a meeting, and that's just a procedural matter. That doesn't mean you couldn't come back in two weeks, or you say, hey, I got the money together a month from now, and put it on a, and request, and have a hearing about that, but because the notice goes out for what we're here about today, we're not able procedurally to, to add to that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. Can you back up one thing? Or, no, one more. Yeah, that one.
And the recommendation...
That doesn't match what I got, okay.
And perhaps, Ryan, do you have any information?
Ryan and Chandler, I think if you allow staff to come up and talk about what they have and what they heard, and, Richard, it gives, yeah, he's reading, I think. Okay, could we, well, you can speak some more, but, Ryan, if you want to give your explanation and everyone else, staff, and we'll give you another opportunity if you wish, here.
Yes, so, just to clarify, this is an amendment to a special use permit, the reason why you are hearing it and not the BZA or the planning commission is because it's a unique circumstance. Technically, this property is zoned office, so instead of rezoning it as a business, it just stayed as a special use permit, similar to what was happening before with Ganson's. So, that's why this is here. There are currently 27, there's a 27-square-foot sign that is lit in the front yard. You can see in the proposal, there's various types of signs that he's wanting in addition to it. So, we have an additional, an attached lighted sign, which is about seven and a half square, square feet total to be put on the building, that, that's the lit sign that he mentioned that says Igor's.
That's the Igor's sign.
That's the Igor's sign, and then there's also these pennant, these free pennant-type stands, that are about 22 square feet, they're the tall flags that you're seeing out there. Those are typically, very rarely approved in the city of Rock Island. I think there's only a couple of cases where the BZA has offered that as variance, but they're only out when the company is actually advertising to lease, for example, they'll say leasing now, or something, and they're just up there for a day or two, it's not there permanently. So, that's why we've recommended against those types of signs in this request. So, what we're proposing is just that he is allowed to do the Igor's attached to the wall that is lit, and that we suggest maybe changing or improving the sign that he currently has, that could say restaurant on it instead of bistro, to avoid some of the confusion. So, that's, the recommendation here is just to allow what's attached to the building.
And to keep the freestanding flags?
No, to have the freestanding flags, no.
And for a point of clarification, Richard was correct, he did, in, in the body of your report, it does talk about him saying, offering an alternative of a lighted sign in the, in the body, that's not part of the recommendation, but sir, you are correct, that you did make that as a part of the matter that is on the agenda, but, and that is not what is recommended, but certainly council could consider that, if they wanted to make an amendment.
Well, I have one question. Why was this not rezoned? Do you know? I think that was before you and I were both here.
Well, yeah, and I, and I have asked that question before, most likely because the rezoning would have failed. It's, it's a hard, it's, the piece of property is surrounded by residential uses and recreational uses, so to rezone that as a before, it also doesn't really match our future land use plan, so it's kind of a unique situation, and in those unique situations, we usually just go for the special use permit and just have the council regulate what can happen there.
Would...
If we were to rezone it, it really wouldn't change the amount of signage permitted, so...
Yeah.
Because the amount permitted is based on the square footage frontage of the lot, and so that's very similar through each zone, so...
Would that be different, utilizing form-based codes, just a nerdy zoning question?
Depending on what the form-based code said.
Okay.
Okay. Richard, would you like to say anything else, and I can open up the other, the public also here, but...
Okay, so, what I say about alternative is, are we talking about that now, or no?
I believe you can, yes, because in, in what is submitted in the report, that is not part of the recommendation, but it is part of the notification that went out, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go.
So, ba, yeah, basically, yeah, if I can get the, the lighted sign, then all those other signs will go away.
Depending on the square, depending on the square footage of that lighted sign and everything else, had to match.
Right, which I would take, I would probably take out the existing sign that's there to put that in.
On the building?
Nope, it's freestanding.
Freestanding.
You would replace the current non-digital freestanding sign facing north and south with a LED or some similar...
And eliminate the flags and the other yard signs.
Yes, yes. But for right now, we've got to make some money, bottom line, we've got to make, those, those signs are expensive. They're, you know, they're, they're looking, they want $15,000 for it, are you kidding me? It's a little sign, it's got some light bulbs on it, but apparently, 15 grands, what it costs.
Pretty, it's a pretty sign.
Yeah, very pretty, they're very proud.
We got a question over here, yes?
It's actually not a question, so, just some comments that I wanted to share with you and with the rest of the people here. I got an email from a citizen who was quite distressed about all the signs that you had accumulated there. In the report, it says that staff contacted Mr. Lopez and informed him of the violation, keep in mind, it's a violation, and he has chosen the option to request an amendment of the ordinance rather than removing the additional freestanding signs that violated the special use permit ordinance. So, all those little signs and those flags are not complying to your special use permit.
And I did get a letter from the city, and it said, please remove the signs or apply for a special use permit, it didn't say take them down.
I don't have that information here.
It would have said, take them down, I would have took them down.
I just have what, what I just read to you.
Sure.
So, they're in violation, whether we approve the lighted sign or not, they're still in violation. Now...
I was unaware that you had to go through all this to put a sign in your yard.
We want to try to find a solution here that will help your business, I think we're all probably in agreement on that. And I came up to the restaurant, drove by both directions, even drove on Sockinuck...
The Lane?
Lane, thank you. I never knew what that was called my whole life, I never knew that had a name, but I found the sign. Those little signs, I can't read going by what they say, so they're really, in my opinion, a waste of your money to have them out there, and they're kind of a visual pollution. It would be better, in my opinion, that you had one large, effective sign, lighted or unlighted, whatever, whatever you are going to do, that would communicate your message to the public, and get rid of all the rest of this stuff, flags and little yard signs and things like that, and I'm going to vote to support the staff recommendation to that effect.
Any other questions of Richard?
Of staff?
Yes, fine.
Would a sign, like what we're discussing, would that be eligible for the facade improvement program and/or the cur lift loan? Our staff, is that expenses that he can make that would be eligible for those? I'm trying to come up with a way to help the business owner do this while, you know what I mean?
Yes, signage is, is qualified, this is not in a TIF district, so it would have to come out of the gaming, if there are still gaming funds available for the facade, absolutely you could apply for that.
Okay, so it does, so an expense like this would qualify for facade improvement program if there's money available?
Correct.
And is it, Mark, that's new in your office, it says, it seems to me, have we studied all of the angles? Is a sign the answer for growing this business, or is there other avenues that we can do as a city that would promote more customer base, or is, have we flushed out that a sign is the, the answer?
Well, the, the only thing is, is if you could, like, if you drove down there at night, and you come down 38th Street, you can't even see the building. It's sitting in, it's sitting back from the street, it's dark, we, we don't have exterior lights, you know, like regular restaurants, you know what I mean? This is just a tiny little cafe in the middle of town, and, you know, apparently, everybody else likes this, because we're, you know, we're, we're building our business, we're building, you know, every day, look on Facebook, you know, it's Fives, 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 Five, you know, TripAdvisor, Five Bubble, Five Bubble, I mean, we're doing, you know, I think a good job providing quality food, and I don't think the yard looks that bad, and as far as visual pollution, what about when you get, I mean, I don't, don't take me as a smart aleck, but when, when it's time for reelection, there's signs everywhere, and is that considered pollution? I mean, really?
I think, I think it does. Personally.
But it's okay.
But typically, those are temporary versus this is a little more permanent.
Right, and it, this is only temporary until I make enough money to buy a $15,000 sign.
But you're not sure exactly when, how temporary, temporary is.
Exactly.
So, that's the question also.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we have to be mindful of the residents in what exactly a special use permit is for, and special use permits are for special areas for a special use, and, you know, I, I think there's some people in the audience that want to speak on this, that are, that will have a different view of their neighborhood.
Yep.
Where they live every day.
That's correct. All right, Richard, do you have any comment? You can come back up if need be.
Okay.
Is there anybody out there that opposes this? Gary, if you want, I don't know who wants to speak first, but go ahead, Gary.
Then back there, you want me to sign here too?
Sign.
My name is Gary Snyder, I live at 3717 31st Avenue. I drive by Igor's every day. I'm just curious, how many, curious, how many of you have driven by Igor's? Okay, how many of you, while you're driving either north or south on 38th Street, could read every sign in that yard, plus the banners, plus the freestanding sign, plus all the other attachments he has on the building? Just curious.
Can't read it.
It's a little overpowering, isn't it?
Yes.
And it's not, I have no problem with Igor's, I have no problem with Ganson's, but Ganson's had one sign, and people throughout the Quad City area, I have friends in Davenport, Bettendorf, as we all do, Moline, East Moline, Silvas, they tell me, they've, you know, they've gone to your restaurant, and unfortunately, my iPhone will tell me that they're in the vicinity if I'm at home. I'm opposed to the, the recommendation that we received in the mail. Now, he's making an audible here tonight, by saying, well, he just wants a sign on the building, the west side, and that freestanding lighted sign. Doesn't the ordinance, if there is a freestanding lighted sign, it's not going to be a scrolling sign, is it?
Yes.
I don't know that that is covered in the sign ordinance, a sign that large, a permanent sign like that. I would be opposed to that, the sign that he has, that Ganson's had, putting lights on it from dusk until 9:30, fine, what time do you close?
Nine.
Until nine o'clock? I would have no problem with that, but as the recommendation, wasn't a recommendation, I'm referring to the letter that we received as neighbors, totally against it, it's just overpowering for the size of that front yard. It's a very narrow front yard, and I venture to say where it says, three and up to six additional freestanding signs, you'd have a hard time putting two more signs in that yard, you can't read everything now.
Thank you. Anybody questions?
I do have a question about the hours of operation. What I'm looking at says the hours, and this is the amended, I guess, or proposed amendment to the ordinance, hours of operation closed on Mondays, and then Tuesday through Sunday, six to 10, six to 11, six to 11, six to 10. Is that correct?
That was what we tried to do, but we didn't, we couldn't sustain those hours, you know, like you said, we're a small business, we didn't have a lot of money to do any kind of studies on where, you know, the traffic flow or anything, so we picked those hours so that if we could sustain them, then we could be open without having to come back to a meeting. So, we said 11, but then, when we, when we got in there, we've only been there a year, that we found out, nope, nobody's on this street, Kmart's gone, no one's rolling down the road, so we need to close at nine, because from nine to 11, we had zero customers.
Okay, and let, just let me clarify, because I want to correct myself, that was an amended ordinance that was passed in 2016.
Before we opened, yes.
So, there's a lot of things that seem to be a little nebulous here for me in terms of what your hours of business are going to be with a lighted sign, whether it's scrolled or not, those kind of things, the concerns.
But I, I, I do believe that the city ordinance states that a lighted sign has to be turned off at 10 o'clock in a residential neighborhood, even though that, that particular piece of property is, you know, granted a special use permit, but the lighted sign has to be turned off in a residential area.
Ryan, do you recall?
Like the church, the church is on 30th Street and 31st Avenue, they have to turn theirs off.
The church right next to me is on all the time.
Ryan, can we have some clarification on the scrolling lighted signs?
Beg your pardon?
Right behind, right behind you there, Gary.
Sorry.
That's all right. The sign hours, I'll have to look into that, I think it does depend, some businesses have different, when they apply for variance or rezoning, those hours are set, so that can change. In terms of the scrolling, the city does regulate how quickly it's moving as a, as a traffic or pedestrian safety, so this sign would not be able to flash quickly or change quickly, it could change, but it would have to be slow-moving.
Similar to the Rock Island Township...
Correct.
...lighted sign on 7th Avenue next to the Laborers Hall.
Yes.
Or poor boys.
Is there anybody else that would like to pose? Mr. Dasso?
My name is Fred Dasso. I live at 3921 31st Avenue. It's, some of you know it by Socky, Sockenuck Lane, but 31st Avenue without a sign. I know that some of you are a little leery after a long evening of somebody who shows up with a big yellow pad. However, there is only one sheet and very large script for obvious reasons. I think we've covered the street, for the most part, I think. 38th Street is primarily a residential street. There's a little commercial activity at Arthur's. Socky has a sign that's lighted in front of the golf course. The restaurant has signs, and the next one is Aldi's. Primarily, it's residential, and I think should remain that way. Our concern in our little avenue, our little avenue that comes out to 38th Street, is occasionally, occasionally, the signs cause some visibility issues for us turning onto 38th Street. If you're familiar with that intersection, it's a very busy stop-and-go intersection. Some of the motorists have basically, I think I indicated in an email to you, more horsepower than brain power. So occasionally, when you live in that area, you hear vehicles moving at a pretty fast speed. That is a concern for our family as we get out. When I look to the north, the number of signs that are there now, in any addition, creates a visibility issue. So far, no one's been hurt, and I hope no one ever does, so that's it. Thank you very much for your consideration. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's good. And Richard, just so you know, you have the right to ask questions to them or across, or to the council or anything else. You do have that right.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but, go ahead. I mean, I'll tell you what, we'll finish with the public and then you can, is there anybody else that wishes to speak against it? Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this? Okay?
I didn't know that, I'd have brought more people.
And so you can, you can cross-examine if so to speak, or ask questions?
Well, just, I just, you know, the people are talking about the size of the sign and how they can't read it. I have, can I show this to the council, this picture that Socky has a sign that is no bigger than what I have? And apparently, they must think it works, and that's all by the city, because they have it out in front of their, their property, and it's, it's, all it says is golf, 25, you know, $25 around. And that's just a tiny little sign. Anyway, it's, it's, it's a smaller, it's smaller sign than what I have. And the city, you know, owns that golf course and it, you know, if they're worried about not being able to read it by yard, because you're supposed to stop at that stop sign. Granted, they don't stop. And you can watch them just roll by. And the cops even sit at Socky looking for people that don't stop at the stop sign.
Now, the, once again, not to, the, Socky is right at the intersection, and so people stop, typically stop in each direction. Yours are a little bit down, and so they're definitely moving at that point.
Yeah, correct.
When they're coming by yours.
You're going 45 miles an hour and like 35 feet.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and again, you know, maybe it's not so much as to have them read it, stop and read it, just to make, just to make just to make the fact that there's something there. Because when it, when, it's just, it's small, it looks like a house, because it is in a residential area. And, you know.
I know what, I know what it looks like.
You know what I'm talking about, the little one that just says golf? I mean, people, you know, how are they going to read that? You can't read mine, it's just to see that we're here. These horses here, you know, this building here that isn't a house. And, you know, and, and again, like I said, I have, I have responsibilities, people I borrowed money from. And so alls I'm trying to do is, is pay the bills, give a good product. And I, and I'm not trying to cause any problem, I don't understand what, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, I owe the city money. You know, I owe everybody money, so I'm just trying to pay them back. I don't want to be like the last place that, that went belly up and had to, you know, maybe if they'd had signs, they wouldn't have gone belly up, and they wouldn't have owed the city money when they left. That's all I'm, that's all I'm trying to do.
I appreciate that. And, and I don't think anybody's questioning what you're trying to do. I think, and I've eaten there, as you know, we've, we've visited, it's good food. I plan on being back, and, and thank you for investing in Rock Island. So I don't think anybody's questioning what you're trying to do, or questioning, you know, trying to make a living. The issue is, is we do have to live within regulations.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to work with, so.
And I understand that.
That's the part of it, more than what you're attempting to do and being, running an honest business, so.
Right, and
Nobody's thinking you're doing it on purpose.
And that thing about, the thing about not being able to see traffic out, the signs are
they're this tall, there's no way that's blocking any traffic.
It's not like a bush or a fence.
No, there's a little hill there, and it's, it depends on the elevation of it, you know, in front there, so where you put it. The sign itself, if you're correct as this, but if it's up on a hill, then it elevates that sign.
But the, where they pull out and where that hill is the same.
Unless I'm there, I can't, I'm not going to try to argue that and, and debate it, but.
Are we voting on tonight to allow all of these details to be worked out in an ordinance to come back to us? We're not voting on how many signs are going to be included in this.
Well, you are, because you're voting on this, well, you're voting on, no, you're right. The record, we need some direction on the recommendation from staff.
I, I think the, I think the
You would give us direction moving forward.
I think it's very unclear in the motion itself, which will be worked out in the ordinance. But I think that's where the point of confusion is.
The, the recommendation is to just allow the lighted sign that's attached to the building that says Igor's. The 1.5 foot by 5 feet sign, that's what we're only recommending. That means all other requests would not be permitted.
That's not how the motion reads, it says the attached sign, two freestanding pennant signs, four unit signs, and/or a lighted manual message sign. All to be located on the west end of the
Turn, turn your page, sorry.
Number 12?
That's not on this.
Read the motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're probably just reading the body of the, the text of the request, but if you keep looking.
I was just reading number 12 off the
Look at the agenda sheet.
Okay.
But if it says, if you read just where it says motion, motion, whether to, whether or not to approve the amendment, read that section.
And that's recommending an attached lighted sign.
Correct.
So it's either
The Igor's.
It would just say, it was the Igor's one, so all of the pennants would not be there. The smaller signs would not be there, he would just have a lit Igor sign attached to the building.
And the
But that Igor's sign there is not attached to the
It would look like that, that's what we're recommending.
That, the one on the building's okay, but the, will you go back?
There isn't.
That Igor's, where it says Igor's
That's still
That's incompliant or not?
That is incompliant, so he would be able to maintain that.
But it used to say Ganson's, and it was compliant?
It is, it is still compliant.
Compliant today.
It's compliant today. The pennants are not.
I just understood the answer.
So it's the, it's the, yeah, it's those big open sign there, the yard signs, that the one that says Igor's on it can stay.
It faces
It's not there, the Igor's sign isn't there yet. The Igor's sign on the west, scroll down, Tim, please. That one, that sign does not exist yet. We are granting him the permission to put a sign like that if he decides to.
Correct.
And keep the Igor's
And keep the Igor's Bistro.
But everything else goes.
That is what we are voting on.
And he could change the one that's currently there if he wished, to a lit one or whatever, meeting the right requirements for scrolling or whatever. Correct?
If you, if you wanted to add that.
Yes.
If you wanted to say "and," you'd have to change the motion.
But at this point, is that sign right there, that white sign saying Igor's, Brew, Brewstow, can stay as is, but all the flags and yard sign would have to go?
Ryan, in our, in our scrolling lighted sign ordinance, do we, are we allowed to put requirements on the time of the day that they can be turned on? Do we, do we have the ability to do that?
Typically, that is done, typically that can be done when it would go to the BZA, for example, for variance. But you can also put timeframes on that if you wanted to.
Tonight, we could vote to get rid of all the pennants and small political-sized yard signs, give him the permission to keep the already allowed Igor's Bistro Food and Spirits sign.
Correct.
Put the Igor's sign on the west side of the building, you know, one and a half by five feet. And then also, if we amend the motion, include the permission to install a scrolling lighted screen to work, to only be on during hours of operation.
Correct, you could, you could do that. Okay?
Is that an addition to the Igor's?
No.
It would replace the Igor's Bistro Food and Spirits sign.
Yes.
What is the council's or the public's or Richard's thought on that?
Okay.
I'm good with that, that's basically why I had that alternative
Yeah.
for that, but again, that's, you know, that's down vote a bit, because that's a lot of money that has to be earned before
Well, that's why I, I, you know, if we can work with the CED department, I don't know if there is money available, but I'm, I'm encouraging our staff to work with you to see if there is anything that the city can help with.
Based on what, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and the only other thing was the, the open sign, I would love to keep that. I'd get rid of the other ones. If it's, you know, if that's what the decision is, no problem. I'll get rid of the small signs, but they're in the yard, right? So I can, can I staple them to my deck? I mean, what's, do you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I, I think a matter of fact that
What can I do, I mean, and, and try and to, to maintain some sort of business without having to spend a hundred bucks every time to come in front of the council? I just, you know, I just want to know what, what can I do just to keep?
Ma'am?
My, my recollection on the special use permit that was, was granted is that it talked about specifications for signage. And as we've been talking about, the standalone lighted sign that is the white sign with the orange lettering was approved. And that's my recollection from when we talked about this previously, because I think it's the same sign or same area that the Ganson sign was at. And then, so the others were not part of that special use permit that was granted.
I understand, I understand what you're saying there, and I do agree with that, because I read the paper on that.
So I, what I'm saying is that, but if you were to take signs, I think an argument could be made if you were to take signs and then post them other places on the building. If that's not in the special use permit, that's not part of the special use permit that, as it currently stands.
Okay, but is, is a sign, does it have to be with a logo on it? I mean, what about banners? What about, what about a banner that is going to go on the deck that says $2 domestics, Tuesday through, do I have to get a permit for that?
Yes.
For, for a banner that's on, on the, on my deck?
Yeah. I, I, I guess my thoughts on this is that, as we all know, everything is a compromise, right? And so the proposal that I just recommended is something that I could live with, it's not my ward, I don't want to step on anybody's feet. But there's going to be residents that don't like the scrolling sign. The business owner wants signage to, to promote his business, and, but we need to come to a, an agreement, a compromise. So that's what I would recommend.
Gary, did you have something to add?
Yes, I do. First of all, I want to add that we like to welcome you to the neighborhood, we're glad you're in the neighborhood. I would be in favor of the recommendation that Ryan made, not in its entirety, but to keep the Igor's Bistro sign, the sign, the lighted sign on the, the west side of the building. Take out the, the political-sized yard signs and the banners. This, this is a residential neighborhood. You've got a large parking lot there, there are cars in the parking lot. People know where you're at. I've got to tell you, the people know where you're at.
I understand, but I still had people that
And you're not going to
I didn't even know you were here, and I live right down the street. I'm like, really? I mean, I record it, I'll take pictures, whatever you need, but that is the honest to God truth. I have people come in and say, I didn't even know you were here, and I live right down the street. That's why we did it. Because, okay, if they don't see us, then we need to, we need to
Right, the issue is, and you need to make it revisable.
That's all I
Okay, thanks, Gary. No, you're fine, you're fine, Gary, thank you. And, and once again, in, in whether you need to change the verbiage or get rid of that logo on that sign, that's up to you and, and whether you want to hire someone to figure out the best way. But that's a pretty good-sized sign, it's pretty bright. If you want to change Bistro to Restaurant, so they know it's a restaurant, that makes some sense. You know, and, but that sign is, is pretty good-sized, right there in front for people to see. You can't get much more than that. Maybe with the lighted sign, you're going to get something, but that's pretty bright, that's pretty bright. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for or against this order, this issue? Richard, oh, yes. You need to come up here if you wouldn't mind, ma'am, and, and you do need to put your name and what city you're in. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. You both, there's two more people. Go ahead, come on. Whoever wishes to come first.
While they're coming up, I just want to tell Mr. Lopez, if I sounded harsh, I didn't mean to, and my wife and I have been to your restaurant, we'll be back again.
Yes, if you could make sure you get your name and your city on there, please.
I wasn't going to do this, but I'm going to do it. When Ganson's was there, they had a
Your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joy Dassel.
Okay, thank you.
I live on the street. I'm Fred's wife. I've had to make numerous calls to a lot of people ever since Ganson's went in there. That was a major problem with traffic, because they were so busy all the time. They were parking in all of our yards, down the road, in our driveways, anywhere they could park, on 38th Street where we couldn't see to get out. That finally got rectified. Ganson's sign was a lot smaller than this sign, and they were busy all the time. All the time. You could hardly get in there.
What year was that? Was that their first year?
That was right before you purchased it.
Seventh year, okay.
As far as all the paraphernalia that you're seeing on the screen, those are 12-foot flapping signs that are up there. 12-foot, at least, flapping with the wind. You can't see whether they say restaurant, open, closed, whatever, I don't even get the point why they're there. I think that all should be removed and down to one sign and one sign only at that restaurant. If he's got good food, he's got good service, he's going to get the business. You don't need all of that paraphernalia to draw people in. One of the things that really bugs me, and I have called two or three aldermen about it, is I feel that he is promoting Satanistic things on the exterior of the home, or the business. We're in a residential area where we drive by that every single day of our life, to and from wherever we're going, along with other 12 houses that people live in. There's a casket laying there against the wall with a hand hanging out, blood all over. There's skeletons in the yard, there's witches in the yard, there's now a big spider on the roof. And he has had all that crap up there since last Halloween. Well, my opinion is, he needs to file for a permit to have all of that stuff, rather than a sign for a restaurant. To me, I mean, he's got crosses, you know, he's got caskets, he's got all this stuff in the yard. I find it very offensive, it's very Satanistic, worshiping whatever he's worshiping, dead whatever. And I think that should be addressed, along with the sign.
Make sure you put your name on that sheet of paper, please.
Yep.
And thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there somebody else back here wish to speak? Thank you.
My name is Gwen Patton, I'm also a resident on 31st Avenue. And I drive by your restaurant pretty much every day. And the lady who, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. Joy? Joy. Pretty much spelled out what I had in mind, which was, the rest of the decor is a little bit disturbing to me. And I like the idea that you're in the rest, in the, in the neighborhood, I like having a restaurant there. I'm able to walk there, I've been there once and I thought the food was okay. But the coffins and the skeletons and all the other stuff, I find it a little bit disturbing, too. And the signs, a muted sign like you had, with, you know, attached on the building, might be okay. But is there any guarantee that that's what we're going to see? You know, and I guess that's, that's my biggest problem, is that right now, what we're looking at is a lot of stuff. And I'm not sure where it ends, so I guess that's, that's sort of my two cents. I'd sort of like to see less. And, and I agree, I think if your food is good and the service is good, people really like having you there.
It's just different, my place is just different. What's the difference between Igor's being a What's the difference between Igor's being a Halloween themed restaurant and sitting at a Red Lobster where you pretend that you're at a dockside restaurant?
Well-
Or going to a, going to a Texas Roadhouse and pretending that you're on a ranch?
Because we're in a residential neighborhood and it has a sort of a, an aesthetic that's very sort of calm and dark and, um, pleasant to come home to.
Have we, have we done anything to disrupt that?
Well, the coffin is-
Other than, other than what you see, our decoration?
Yeah, the coffin's pretty-
Has there been riots? Has there been robberies? Has there been anything of, of the Satan work thing that this lady thinks that we're about? Has there been motorcycle gangs? Have you ever had to call the cops for noise? Have you ever had to call a cop for anything? No, because the people that come to my place like Halloween, that's what's fine. If you don't like Halloween, that's fine.
Then you should be doing great business then.
We are.
And, okay.
But it's like I said, like I said to her, Ganson's, that was her seventh year, well, this is our first year, we're still struggling. I mean, you don't just walk into a place and, oh, all of a sudden you're making a ton of money. It's a struggle, and that's what we're doing, we're struggling to get through the first couple of years. I mean, have you ever owned a business? Have you ever opened a business? Pride? I mean, it's, it's difficult, and there's a lot of things-
Sure.
That you don't know, that you don't see until you get into it.
Okay, well, I need to-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much. Speaking of, oh, she's on the floor there. Thank you, appreciate you signing in. Well, I guess one last call, is there anybody else that wishes to speak for or against this issue? No? Richard, you feel, you feel like you've had your speak? And it is difficult to run a restaurant, there's no doubt about it. And there's other types of marketing besides the signs too. There's social, social medias and, yeah, social media is not too bad. And I'm not trying to tell you how to do your business, but, uh, there's more avenues.
But if you could do, I would appreciate it. Yeah, I was, my marketing was, I just love to cook.
I know a good marketing person in the back room. No.
No. Trust us, no.
No, the city is paying also, so, no. But, uh, so, all right. If that's the case, I'm going to close the open meeting and reopen the council meeting. We are still on item number twelve, we need a motion. Who wants to tackle this?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I move to approve an amendment to the special use permit for an attached sign, lighted sign, excuse me, as recommended, subject to the stipulations in the report, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
I second it.
Move to second, discussion.
So this is only allowing the current non-lighted north-south facing Igor's Bistro Food and Spirit sign, and granting him the permission to put a one and a half by five foot sign on the west side of the building that can be lighted.
Yep. That's the way I interpret what the motion-
And removing the penance and political sized yard signs.
Yep.
And everything else.
That's the way I understand it.
Okay, that's the way, the second understands it.
And for clar-
That's the way you intended it?
Okay, for clarification, I think that as special use permit as written right now, there are lights, I think there are some sort of floodlights that do illuminate that, that wooden sign, and that is part of the special use permit as it sits today. Just so when you said lighted, I-
Yep, I think a lighted, they're talking about scrolling lighted versus spotlight, but yes.
Okay.
Okay?
So if we approve this tonight, does that mean the big flags come down tomorrow?
Yes. I mean, they really shouldn't be there right now.
Correct. I mean, that's what the residents are talking about, is the big flags, correct?
And the, and the, and the, uh, smaller ones.
Yeah.
So you understand that? So if we vote for tonight, tomorrow the flags come down?
Right.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in fa-
If, if, we have to have a roll call, right?
No, always a roll call because it's modified, or not?
It's a roll call.
Roll call. Oh, it is a roll call, I'm sorry.
Then, um, if Mr. Lopez would like to get a scrolling lit sign, then he has to go through the process to do that. We don't want to just do that now.
That's not in the motion.
Right. I'm saying we could amend the motion to include that if we wanted.
It's this way, I mean, once again, I'm not commenting, but I'll say a little cleaner that you go through the official, like any other restaurant would be, or business, I should say, um, to make sure that ordinances are met or zoning is met, uh, with that sign.
Sure.
All right, roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Yes.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Thank you, thank you, everybody participating.
I can order the Igor's sign and get the other ones down?
Get the other ones down, and you can order meeting ordinances and everything else, the stipulations for on the side of the building. If you want to change anything out in front of the building, that other sign that's out in front, you need to apply for that, do some drawings, get the specs, and talk to, uh, uh, the zoning people back there. Okay? Thank you. Item thirteen.
An ordinance amending Chapter Nine, Article One, Section Nine dash twelve A eight of the Code of Ordinances relating to cora and the possession of cannabis up to ten grams.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Yes.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fourteen.
Claims, A and B. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and fifty six cents to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois, for legal services rendered from April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. And B, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars to William Griffin the Third and Vanderginns Law of Moline, Illinois for general liability settlement.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims item A and B.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion?
Just wanted to clarify something, I don't know if I heard Judith correctly or not. Was A, uh, payment for legal services? Okay. That's good.
What else would we pay Dave for? I hate to answer that.
My mind must have been-
Thank you. Right. Is, there's a motion, there's been a second, is there any other discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Berry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried. And C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number six in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois, for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen sidewalk and pavement patching program for services provided from January first, two thousand eighteen, through May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Move to accept the report and authorize payment as recommended for claims item C.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Due to the nature of my employment, I will be recusing myself from this vote.
We should just put that on the recording.
Keep doing this.
Roll call, please.
I appreciate it.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Fifteen.
Claims for the weeks of May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth in the amount of five hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-three cents, May twenty-fifth through May thirty-first in the amount of five hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-six cents, and June first through June seventh in the amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand eighty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents, and payroll for the weeks of May seventh through May twentieth in the amount of one million four hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and three dollars and sixty cents, and for the weeks of May twenty-first through June third in the amount of one million five hundred and thirty thousand sixty dollars and forty-three cents.
Motion to allow claims and payroll?
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? None, roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item sixteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the purchase of activated carbon, recommending the bid be awarded to Cabot Norrit of Marshall, Texas in the amount of twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for forty-one thousand pounds of hydro Darko S activated carbon.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the purchase.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item seventeen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a lease extension with T-Mobile Central LLC, successor in interest to Iowa Wireless Services LP, for leasing cellular antenna space on the city's water tower at Twenty-Fourth Street and Thirty-First Avenue.
Motion to approve the lease extension as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
I, I do want to make one clarification. We were looking at this this morning in my office, and I think on the last, on the second page, it says, "In witness whereof", and then it says that the effective date would be June sixteenth of two thousand eighteen. Per the request of the lessors on page one, you'll see that they had changed to a commencing July first, two thousand and eighteen. So there would be a small Scrivener's error to correct that July, to July first on the, uh, last sentence where it says, "In witness whereof, the parties here to have caused this agreement to extend water tower lease agreement to be effective as of July first." That would qualify as a minor attorney modification, but I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of it so that there was no thought that we were modifying something without your knowledge.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Well, I, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Uh, so the recent small cell tower bill that passed in the Illinois General Assembly, does, I don't know, Larry or Randy or whomever, does that regulate this type of antenna?
No. So that regulates the small cell towers that are along the city right of way, not on the city facilities?
Not on the water towers.
This is not one of those small cell facilities.
Okay. I just saw, I think it was today, the Illinois Municipal League has given model ordinance for regulating and fees and whatnot associated for the small cell towers.
Yeah, the fees are set, they have a model ordinance they sent out a couple of weeks ago here, and I think they sent it out again today.
Okay. If we can maybe have a-
You'll, you'll see it here coming up.
That was my request, thank you.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Preemption.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair. Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item eighteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a request from the Coast Guard Auxiliary to use the parking lot at Sunset Marina from eight AM to noon on June seventeenth, July fifteenth, and August nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, for their annual fundraising breakfast, and a request to hang a banner at the Marina entrance.
Motion to approve the request as recommended. Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Besides, it's not a bad breakfast. It's pretty good. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, item nineteen.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an application from Barbara Bernauer to purchase city-owned property at twenty-two hundred First Street.
Moving to approve selling the city-owned property as recommended, authorize staff to negotiate a sale price with the applicant, and prepare a purchase agreement for council approval.
Second. Move to second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say, uh, I have known this family, they're here tonight for approximately fifty years, and I hope the price that you negotiate with the city is appropriate. If not, you know my number, right? Call me.
He'll help make the difference up. Hell, you know him. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an application from Joshua Ship to purchase city-owned property at forty-five oh six Fifth Avenue.
Move to approve the selling, selling the city-owned property as recommended, authorize staff to negotiate a sale price with the applicant, and prepare a purchase agreement for city council approval.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-one.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Lance Clark, principal of Francis Willard Elementary School, to turn Twenty-Fifth Avenue between Ninth and Eleventh Streets into a one-way for eastbound traffic on school days between the hours of seven fifteen AM to eight fifteen AM and two thirty PM to three thirty PM. This item was delayed from the April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen council meeting.
Move to approve, go ahead.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, uh, has staff sent out letters to the people in the neighborhood concerning this?
Uh, yes, we did. Um, you know, as the original mailing, there were five houses that are directly on either Eleventh Street with driveways facing the softball fields at Francis Willard, or on Twenty-Fifth Avenue. They were inadvertently left off the original mailing, they have been, since been included. And we received two of those responses back out of the five.
Okay, so there were five total?
Five total in addition to the original mailing, correct.
Right. What about the people across the street, uh, in the second ward?
Yes.
They were sent out also?
On Twenty-Fifth Avenue, all the houses along Twenty-Fifth Avenue?
No, on Ninth Street.
Uh, no, not on Ninth Street, no.
Because understanding I have, there's probably as many or more children that go to Francis Willard School in the second ward as in the third ward. And I've got calls about this and from Aunt Bee, the restaurant. Uh, I would like to know if we've had any accidents over the years there on Twenty-Fifth Avenue, and what the reasoning is for changing this.
Sure. You know, to my knowledge, there's not been any accidents, the, the request came directly from Lance Clark, the school principal. Um, he does happen to be here tonight.
Yes.
Uh, so he can, you know, give his statement as well. Um, you know, we, we've witnessed both the traffic patterns, the school has tried to modify the traffic patterns, um, to assist with the children getting on and off or in and out of the vehicles. Um, one of the issues you have is obviously with the two-way traffic. You have parents pull up facing westbound on the north side of the road, letting the kids out on the north side, and they're trying to cross all the way through the traffic from, the cars are already stopped, plus the driving traffic, plus the cars that are parked dropping off on the south side. Um, this is strictly a precaution for the safety of the kids that we're looking at, making it one-way just twice daily, much like what you have up at the Center for Math and Science. So, no, we, we polled only the houses that were directly affected on Twenty-Fifth Avenue. I apologize, I did not poll anybody on Ninth Street directly because of being an, I mean arterial. Um, we just wanted to poll the ones that would have to change the direction of, for them just to get to their personal property.
Okay.
While, while Mr. Clark is walking up, I will just say, I was there Sunday, and we had a parade for the softball team, and we were dotting in and out of traffic just on Sunday, just for the parade. So I can only imagine what it would be like on a weekday with all those students.
Correct.
So again, this is just, uh, precautionary, uh, there haven't been any accidents, we don't want any accidents. And we think with the flow of traffic, especially after school, I know Mr. Spaghetti, uh, came down and viewed the morning and the afternoon. Morning didn't seem as bad as the afternoon, but if we can have kids, um, or parents parking on one way going towards the high school, and that's why we wanted to only go until three thirty, because we know with the high school dismissing, you know, excuse me, uh, coming down the hill, we didn't want any issues with that. But, uh, we have a lot of students that will just kind of not use the crossing guards. They're kind of crossing, uh, just directly across, um, to get to their parents. And, um, if we can have the traffic flowing one way, we can have them, um, A, dropped off and picked up on the same side where basically like our breakfast doors are in the softball field. Um, and then the other lane would be used as that passing to go towards the stoplight.
Okay.
Well, as I say, uh, I represent the second ward where these children cross. The parents, some of them have kids there. They have kids at Edison. They have kids at the high school or whatever. I think we celebrated, um, the seventy-fifth anniversary of the school four years ago. As far as I know, there's never been an accident. There's never been a child hurt there. And to be precaution, as you say, you might be creating a problem. Because by being a one-way, these parents that are running late, who's to say they're not going to take off trying to get up to high school or get down to Edison or whatever? But, uh, as I say, I talked to a lady that was a crossing guard there, Betty Miller, approximately forty years ago. She's against it. Other people are against it. I vote the way my neighbors and constituents tell me, so I will be voting against it for those reasons.
Sure. And I wanted to come here tonight just in case people, uh, who this was affecting, you know, I could answer any questions for them too, just to help out with that.
All right. Yes.
I just wanted to mention that after all the letters were sent out to all the residents on, uh, Twenty-Fifth Avenue between Ninth and Eleventh Street, five were in favor and five were opposed. The school district has said they're asking for this because it's a safety concern. And in my mind, um, when you, when I have to compare convenience versus safety, I'm going to come down on the side of safety. Even if some people think that's wrong, I'd rather vote in a way that would make the street safer, hopefully for the children being picked up and dropped off. And so I'm going to vote in favor of the motion.
Any other comments?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
One other. Uh, all due respect to Alderman Clark. He works for the school system. I don't know. I'd ask the city attorney whether he could approve the motion or make the motion or even vote on this.
Uh, to err, it probably would be wise to err on the side of caution. But, uh, I don't know that he would be prohibited from it, but it probably would, uh, it may be, uh, my recommendation would be to err on the side of caution if the, in the event that, uh, we're talking about a recommendation from the school district that employs you.
But it says Lance Clark. He's an employee of the school district. Does that make, that means he's the school district?
No, you're an employee of the school district.
No, 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 no. I'm saying what the...
The individual requested it, not the public body.
That, I think that that is certainly a factor that would be included in whether, if, if your employer were requesting it, I would suggest that you would not be able to do that.
My employer is not requesting it.
But it says principal of Francis Willard. It doesn't say Lance Clark, period.
Well, I...
He is the principal of Francis Willard School, and he is an employee of the school district.
I, I understand that, and there certainly could be an argument made that there's an appearance of some sort of impropriety, and I think that's a judgment call that I would have to leave up to the individual aldermen to make their decision.
Okay.
Mr. Mayberry, I'd be happy to answer any questions, you know, for you as, as what some of those concerns may be, um, you know, to, to help that out. I mean...
I think I brought up those concerns. There's never been a child hurt, never been an accident there where people have been hurt. And you've got a restaurant there, and I don't know why the lady isn't here. Uh, this will affect her business from what she says. She's been there for over twenty years.
I would respectfully disagree with that. Just because it's not a permanent one-way, it's only for, you know, the times when students are arriving for school and when they're dismissing from school.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
This calls for a motion versus a roll call. So if this...
Voice vote?
A voice vote. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Sounds to me like it's ayes have it. There's two to...
You want to just do a roll call to be sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
No.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Good call, Mayor.
And as I said earlier, uh, I'm not sure whether he should have been voting, but...
Still been three, two. Three to two if he would have abstained.
Right.
So, either way, passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's no rela, he's no relation to me, but we do...
Are you sure?
I saw some resemblance.
I'm not going to say...
Don't go there.
I'm not going to say.
Don't go there. I laughed. Item twenty-two, please.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Jason Tannenmore to install three-way stop signs on Twenty-first Street at its intersection with Sixteenth Avenue.
Okay, the double negatives. Move to deny the request. Wait, no. Move... Now, staff recommended that they not get the stop sign.
Right.
I'm going to get them a stop sign. So how do I make the motion here? I move to...
Approve the request.
Approve the request. But then, as recommended?
It's not as recommended.
Okay, move to approve the request.
Second. Moving to second. Discussion. Is everybody clear what's up?
Yes, I, yeah.
They getting a stop sign.
I'm not going to argue against the stop sign, but I want to make sure that we understand where that stop sign is going. Isn't it a stop sign, stop sign, stop sign on three blocks? Am I wrong about that?
So on this particular stretch of Twenty-first Street at the intersection of Sixteenth Avenue, that, there's already stop signs heading northbound toward Sixteenth Street dead ends in the Twenty-first Avenue. There's also a stop sign coming out of the exit from the Center for Math and Science School. So it's east and west traffic on Sixteenth Avenue that they're asking to put stop signs on and essentially make it a four-way stop, even though the exit driveway off the school is not necessarily a street. It does have its own stop sign to help warrant and control traffic. There are stop signs to the east at Twenty-second Street, and there are stop signs to the west at Twentieth Street already. Uh, so this is just the intermediary in the middle. Traffic control did not warrant it. Traffic council did not warrant it. There's been no accidents at the intersection, and it's already a two-way controlled intersection with just that short thoroughfare on Twenty-first, or Sixteenth Avenue being through.
So the, the stop signs, uh, if this passes, uh, would be installed on the, uh, east and west traffic on Sixteenth Avenue?
If the council agree, you know, approves the putting of the stop signs in, we would be adding stop signs on Sixteenth Avenue facing east and westbound.
I didn't, I didn't, I was incorrect.
I'm familiar with the intersection and the eastbound traffic on Sixteenth Avenue coming from Twentieth Street up to Twenty-first Street. It's quite an incline on a brick road.
Correct.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about having someone have to stop there at the top of the hill in the wintertime. Uh, I'm not necessarily opposed to the stop signs, but does anybody else see a concern there, including the Public Works Director?
Uh, no concern from our standpoint. We just went off the manual uniform traffic control device. Basically, whether it was warranted, if it met certain criteria, and this particular intersection did not meet any of the criteria. We've got a petition that's been signed by several of the homeowners that have requested the signs.
Sure.
Uh, but again, we just stayed true to course with, following with the MUTCD guidelines.
Dylan?
Does, and I'm not going against you, Dylan, but I'm just saying that, was there any opposition?
I believe the memo says that ten households responded, all of them in favor.
Okay.
That ought to be enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I have a sense that it's going to pass to any of the property owners around there. I know a lot of them are here. Anybody want to speak? You've had to sit through a nearly three-hour meeting for a stop sign, so let's give you your hour to speak.
Good evening. I know we're getting a little late here. I'm Lisa Martin. I live at twenty-sixty-sixteenth Avenue, right there on that corner. I understand your, your position on in the winter, but that street is one of them that is first plowed because of the school right there. My concern is the children. We have five hundred and eighty students at that school. That crosswalk is on the southwest side. They cannot cross on the northeast side. They can only cross on that side. So we have children crossing, and I, and we have witnessed several times where there has not been a crossing guard, and we've watched, I've counted, over a hundred children who have crossed before a crossing guard just came out. We've got cars coming both ways at high rates. I sit out there. I watch them where they come flying down that road, and when they hit Twentieth, they don't even stop. They just roll around the corner because they're coming so fast. I understand, like, when they did, and they're only showing the hundred and twelve cars per hour, and we're supposed to have three hundred. This is a brick road in a residential area. I think three hundred cars in an hour is a little high. And I'm glad that we don't have three hundred cars in an hour. But we just don't have students. We have children who are there after school. We have individuals that come to play basketball, play soccer. We have the community. There is several in the community that are dog owners that walk their dog around that school and cross at that corner. Yes, down at the other end on Twenty-second and Sixteenth Avenue, we have three stop signs. There is no stop sign that comes out of that school. So when that's, they exit out of that school, they don't stop. And that, and underneath those three signs, there's not even a three stop, like a three-way stop thing. It's just stop signs. So if you're not aware, when you come to one of those stop signs, if a car comes flying out of that school, you're thinking it's a four-way stop. And at that one, there is no way, there's no sidewalks for the students to go in at that corner. It's only at the other corner. It, it's just, um, it's the safety. We also have, I know several of yous may know. Where did Adam go on me? Oh, there's Adam. We also have a special need, child who actually lives on the corner of Twenty-first and Sixteenth Avenue. I'm just out here looking for the safety. I sit out there. I watch these cars. I yell for them to slow down. They don't. They curse back at me. I can't do anything else. I do, yes, I, like I said, in the winter, we are the first, and it does get slippery on those brick roads, but it's just the safety of these kids.
Very good. If you could make sure you put your name.
I did. We did. I did.
Our, our children are lucky to have residents like you who look out for their best interests.
Anyway, no, they're all going all different ways when those parents pick up.
Our community that look after our children, and that's exactly what you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, those all, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-three.
Double whammy.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Jason Tannenmore to install three-way stop signs on Twenty-second Street at its intersection with Seventeenth Avenue.
Move to approve the request.
Second.
There was a hesitation there, but...
Well... Stop signs. That's the intention of the motion.
Get the stop signs. We've got a second. We've got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item twenty-four.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for the removal of a handicap parking space at six seventeen Thirty-second Street.
Motion to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item twenty-three.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Report from the Traffic...
I really often...
I'm getting tired. Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Two Rivers United Methodist Church for the removal of their parking lot from being under city ordinance control, section nine dash four-two.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion?
I was just curious as to why they don't want the city to have an ordinance under it. Is there any one here? Yeah.
I, I mean, I can just speak what they, you know, brought to our attentions. They've just not had any issues as far as having to have, you know, vehicles towed and just didn't want to continue to pay for the, the annual fee to be on the ordinance to have it patrolled.
So what is the fee, annual fee?
I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Larry, you can go sit down. Item twenty-six.
Report from the mayor regarding reappointments and appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals and an appointment to the Fire Pension Board of Trustees.
Move to approve the reappointments and appointments as recommended.
Second. Moving to second. I will let you know who they are. For the, uh, BZA, it would be Kevin Day is a reappointment. David McAdams is a reappointment. And then a new one would be David Muse, Donald Muse. Uh, a new appointment would be Nicole Finney. And a new appointment would be Bill Swords, and a new appointment would be Jeff Wright for the BZA. And for the Fire Pension Board, it would be Shelley Showwater. New appointment. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item twenty-seven.
Report from the city clerk regarding a street closing request from the Illinois Iowa Center for Independent Living for their ADA Celebration Annual Block Party on Friday, July twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, from eight AM to three PM. A resolution authorizing the temporary closure of Fifth Avenue, US sixty-seven, between Eleventh Street and Twelfth Street. A request for sound amplification and a request for utilization of the city-owned lot on the north side of Fifth Avenue.
Move to approve the request as recommended and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moving to second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-eight.
Report from the city clerk regarding a Plaza Event Application from Alpha Sigma Chi to hold a fundraiser, flip the district on Saturday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, from five PM to eight PM with sound amplification. A request for consumption of alcohol in the fenced-in area and a request for the waiver of application and event fees.
Move to approve the event and request as recommended, subject to complying with all Plaza and Liquor License Regulation and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Twenty-nine.
Report from the city clerk regarding a Plaza Event Application for the Rock Island Grand Prix to be held on Saturday, September first, two thousand and eighteen, from eight AM to six PM, and on Sunday, September second, two thousand and eighteen, from eight AM to nine PM. A request to close Second, Third, and Fourth Avenues between Seventeenth and Twentieth Streets, close Seventeenth, Eighteenth, Nineteenth, and Twentieth Streets north of Fifth Avenue and south of First Avenue, and close Fourth Avenue at Twenty-Fourth Street from Friday, August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, at five PM to Monday, September third, two thousand and eighteen, at six AM, and a request to use a portion of Parking Lot C from Wednesday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, through Monday, September third, two thousand and eighteen.
Move to approve the event as, and requests as recommended.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item thirty.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Levette Johnson for a change in date for her street closing and sound amplification request from June twenty-third to August fourth, two thousand eighteen, for a community awareness event.
Move to approve the request is recommended.
Second.
To second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thirty-one.
Street closing and sound amplification requests. A, B, and C. A. Report from the city clerk regarding requests from Desi Abbott for a street closing at Twelfth Avenue between Eighth Street and the alley to the east of her residence at eight oh eight Twelfth Avenue on Saturday, July fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, from ten AM to eight PM, and sound amplification for a family reunion. B. Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Siney Tate for a street closing at Twenty-fifth Street between the alleys south of Seventh Avenue and Eighth Avenue on Saturday, June twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, from noon until six PM for a birthday party. And C. Report from the city clerk regarding a sound amplification request from Shalay Martin of Celebrate for an event to be held at Kavanaugh's Hilltop Tavern at twelve twenty-eight Thirtieth Street on June sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, from eight PM to eleven PM.
Move to approve the request for street closings and sound amplification is recommended as for items A through C.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have other business. Is there somebody that's signed up there? Raju, I think you've signed up.
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Raju Panmacha. We live in Taylor Ridge. First, when, when we came to Quad Cities, we lived in Rock Island at Heather Hidge, Heather Ridge Apartments. That was in nineteen seventy-four. At the time, the Quad Cities was booming, two-point-two percent unemployment. Everybody thought that the southwest Rock Island is going to develop quite a bit at that time. And since then, it did not develop. But, you know, in the last ten years, I had purchased property along the Beltway. I own two-hundred-and-fifty acres facing the Expressway. At the corner of sixty-seven and Beltway, I own one-ninety acres contiguous. And north of the Highland Springs Gulf Force, I own sixty-three acres. So tonight, I would like to give a, a small presentation on my plans to develop southwest Rock Island. So, you know, like I mentioned, you know, we own two-hundred-and-fifty acres in Rock Island. That is commercial and residential development of thing, you know. I did a preliminary analysis on the TIF. I'm a civil structural engineer licensed in the state of Illinois, and I did the analysis based on the factors. Maximum number of factors you can qualify is eight. Based on my preliminary evaluation, it qualifies for five, and we need a minimum of two to qualify as a TIF. What I did was, since I'm not a licensed in, you know, do the full evaluation of TIF, I had coordinated through Chandler Poole, our director, and I'm tied up with Kane McKenna from Chicago, who are the TIF consultants. I sent my report, seventy-page report to them. They are now evaluating my preliminary evaluation. If it is feasible, and if they stamp that it is going to qualify more than the two factors, I would like to go with the full TIF evaluation by Kane McKenna. Of course, I'm going to go through the Mr. Chandler Poole to work on the TIF. So main thing is, I'm looking for a TIF to make it as a viable development project in this area, because this area is surrounded by a lot of housing, and they're all like forty-five-year and plus old housing. Okay? So just to let you know, everybody got this handout, and if you look at the first enclosure, one, it shows where my property is, along the Beltway in red, that one ninety acres contiguous. And to the left, north of the Highland Springs, I got sixty-three acres, and the remaining seventy-four acres is in Myland across the sixty-seven. So if TIF is approved, I would like to start the Rock Island portion, even though I got some land in Davenport. That's the, this is, the Rock Island is the first place where I moved to Quad Cities, and I got that sentimental value. And so if you look at, I got several pages, like enclosure two, it shows, you know, the Wallace Robert, he did the kind of, you know, concept analysis in two thousand and two. It shows all the surrounding area around, and my land is in between. Okay? Next one is enclosure three. That's the, I had a concept study done in two thousand fourteen by Missman, and I did not like the concept that showed right here. I'm going to revise it, but I wanted to have a better concept. That's the whole one-ninety acres. Next one is the enclosure four. That was done by Wallace Robert and Todd in two thousand two. That was done for city of Rock Island, because they had plans, how we can develop this area. They had, you know, they were thinking about on, in two thousand two. Okay? That's, that gives the area. Next one, enclosure five, is with red buildings. That's the concept I developed myself in two thousand fourteen. This one got six-hundred-and-eight-thousand square feet of area for development. I'm talking about building area, including the retail, including the hotel, bank, restaurants, and some of the office space. That was the concept that I had. Okay? If you look at the next page, that was done by Missman, that tells what's the existing zoning. Okay? Next page, what's the proposed zoning. I want to have the zoning done on, along the Ninety-second Avenue, that is the Beltway, as a commercial, and everything south is going to be residential. Actually, I got property, it goes all the way to Fourteenth Street West. Okay? So in conclusion, what I'm planning, I'm requesting city council members to support me in getting this TIF developed, and I'm sure the factors that are required by the TIF law is going to pass, in my opinion. If it is not, if it doesn't pass, then it's a different story. And like I said, you know, I own in Illinois three-hundred-and-twenty-five acres, and Rock Island, in Rock Island, I got two-hundred-and-fifty acres facing the Expressway, and seventy-four acres in Myland, and Davenport, twenty acres. So to start with, I would like to develop Rock Island area, this one-ninety acres, and with your support, I am requesting to provide me the best support possible. That's all I got. And any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you for coming and making your presentation on enclosure number two. I had a question about the light colored areas within the red lines that are the property that you own.
Yes, yes, right here.
What are those light colored areas?
Oh, this is, this whole, is this the one you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And the, everything is else is outside. It's not mine. You know, it's all, you know, the whole area. If you look at sixty-seven at the corner, it starts here, all the way through the Beltway, and you got the existing subdivision, and it goes all the way, except this Quad City Hindu temple, about ten acres, right here. That's the Quad City Hindu temple, but everything else is mine, two hu, one-hundred-and-ninety.
So within the red lines, that's your property?
That's exactly right.
Now, within that area, there are, there's some greenish, yellowish area, but there are some lighter colored, almost white.
It's a terrain.
Kind of gray, light gray.
It's a terrain because of the sloping and the rolling hills and the hilly area. It's a contours, you know?
Those are contour, area, contour lines.
Yeah, contour map. Yeah, that's, that's what it is.
Are those light areas elevated, higher up?
I think before we get too far into the discussions, I'm sorry, Alderman Spaghetti's, and I don't mean, I just want to make sure we're following procedurally. This, this is a matter where he was going to come up and, and make a presentation, but without it being on the agenda, I, I want to make sure that we don't run afoul of anyone saying that they were not notified of, of this, and I, I don't mean to, I'm sorry to interrupt.
He can tell me later.
Yeah.
Yep, that's exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Appreciate.
Appreciate your thoughts of investing in Rock Island.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there other business to be brought forth?
Uh, yes, it was brought to my attention that not only are Rock Island Myland girls won first place, but our girls from Rock Ridge also won first place, and some of them and their families live in Rock Island Myland District. Okay? If you're familiar with sports, Halp, that went to Wisconsin to play basketball, he went to Rock Ridge, but he lived in Myland. So I believe that we should recognize those girls for winning the state championship also in the near future.
You want to bring some information? We can work on that or follow through. That'd be great.
Well, staff can, you know? That's what we paying them for. I need a raise.
I'm not going to go down that way.
I know, you ain't.
All right. Anything else for other business? If not, item thirty-three.
Executive Session, five ILCS one-twenty, section two, C-eleven. Litigation, when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basing, basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. And five ILCS one-twenty, section two, C-twenty-one. Discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section two-point-zero-six.
Move to go into executive session for the exceptions cited.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Genin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry. Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Thank you.